Okay, that would be helpful. Somerville Planning Board for Wednesday, November 12th, 2025, please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided. A copy of the note specifying the date, time, and location was one posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed, faxed, or emailed to the Courier-News, and three given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Bill Cale is excused. Jason Kroska.
Here.
John Manolio is also excused. Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember of room.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I need a motion for the approval of minutes from October 22nd.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kroska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Us.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, we have no rezos tonight, so moving on, we have a hearing for 122 West Main Street Estate, Real Estate Corp. Purpose interior alternat- alterations, exterior alterations, and installation of a 24.5 square foot illuminated sign to convert the property located on 122 West Main Street into a fully operational pizzeria, 122 West Main Street, as Real Estate Corp. seeks variance relief for sign installation. They want to come up?
Ready to proceed?
Yep, you can.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Robert Falkerson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, 122 West Main Real Estate Corp., the owner of 122 West Main Street located in the borough's B1 business zone. The application before you this evening seeks minor site plan approval together with limited signage relief in connection with the vacant prop, commercial space that was previously utilized as a day spa on Main Street. This is a proposed pizzeria/restaurant use which is expressly permitted in the B1 district, and it involves no expansion of the footprint of the building, no site alteration, and no changes to the parking or circulation. Strictly, the relief we're seeking is related to signage on the exterior of the building. The property is located on Main Street adjacent to an existing restaurant within the well-established block of active storefronts. The applicant includes modest interior improvements, facade updates, and potential building safety upgrades that will modernize the space and contribute to the visual continuity of the downtown corridor. The requested signage relief relates only to a simple, modestly designed wall sign that is proportionate to the building's narrow storefront. The physical characteristics of this building is very narrow. I believe it is consistent with the borough's downtown signage aesthetics and intended primarily to ensure appropriate visibility and wayfinding. We'll go into more detail when we have our experts testify, but overall, I believe this is a compliant application that advances the borough's master goals of maintaining a vibrant, pedestrian-friendly Main Street with active ground floor uses that support downtown vitality. And if you're ready, we could go with our... We may have... The applicant himself is arriving later. I would normally put him on in case we had any questions, but if any questions arise, we could put him on, but we're going to move forward with our architect.
All right, we'll swear you in first.
Sure.
Yep. Did you swear the testimony about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Wonderful. And just before we start, just a couple housekeeping issues. We're going to mark the application and supporting documentation as A1. A2 will be the notice and publication proofs. PB1 will be the Board Planner/Engineers Review Letter dated November 6, 2025, and PB2 will be the letter also dated November 6, 2025, by the borough's fire official.
Can we swear in the witness?
All set.
Okay. Could you please, Mr. Donato, could you please state your profession?
Sure, I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
How long have you practiced?
I received my license in 1992 and held my own practice throughout New Jersey since 1995.
Where are you licensed to practice architecture?
New Jersey.
Is your license currently in good standing?
Yes, it is.
Do you know what your license number is for the record?
1228O.
All right. And how long have you been licensed in New Jersey?
Since 1992 and my own practice throughout the state of New Jersey since 1995.
And in similar... Could you please testify any similar projects to this one you've done around the state?
Absolutely. I've testified from South Barnicot all the way north to Edgewater, Fort Lee, and with this applicant who owns this building for the past 10 years, restaurants throughout northern New Jersey, Morristown, Parsippany, Livingston, Kloster, Old Topan, so yes.
And during those applications, the boards have accepted you as an expert in architecture?
Yes, they have.
I don't... I will offer him as an expert to the Board if they have any further questions about his qualifications.
He is accepted.
Thank you.
Kara, did we actually swear him in?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to... I know I zoned, but I was reading. I just want to make sure.
Same here. Mr. Donato, could you please tell us what the scope of your engagement was with this project?
Sure. So, this applicant actually also owns the property next door to us, which was a combined pizzeria/restaurant. I was retained by the applicant to renovate... When he purchased the building next door, it was really a combined three store, three properties, two buildings, the restaurant, pizzeria, and what is currently or was an existing massage parlor. And I was retained to basically renovate the existing two buildings, and the proposal was to renovate just a restaurant next door, take that pizzeria, and then bring that pizzeria over to what was the massage use in that building.
So during your scope of engagement, is it to say that you physically visited the site and inspected the surrounding area?
Many times. Walked through the Main Street, behind the parking, combined parking area, but yes, I have.
Now, have you reviewed a survey prepared by John C. Ritt, PLS of James D. D.D. Survey LSC, consisting of one sheet and dated October 25, 2024, in order to assist you with your plans?
Yes, I have, and it's part of the plans that were submitted to the Board, Sheet A2. And what this does, it shows West Main Street. It shows what's... It shows what's three separate lots, but it's really two separate buildings. The lower part, the bottom area, which I'll point you to here, is the... What we're here for tonight, the use what is... Was previously a massage parlor. We're going to renovate the entire interior of the space into a proposed pizzeria. And the survey also shows there's access from Davenport Street to a parking area in the back, and that's where the dumpsters are, and we also have access to the building at the rear of the building from that parking area.
Now, you briefly touched on it, that the current use is a vacant space. Do you know how long approximately it's been vacant?
I don't. I was there about a year ago measuring the inside of the building, which, for the record, was a little scary. Sheets were hiding stuff. Even currently, the windows were hidden, so I was in there. I measured the existing space. I'm not sure. When I was there, a year ago, they were still operational.
And you prepared initial architectural plans that were submitted to the Board with this application that are entitled Proposed Restaurant Pizzeria, consisting of three sheets dated 12, 16, 24, which were subsequently revised. But you first provided a first plan, is I guess my question?
Yes, we provided our first plan to get our letter of denial, and then when we received comments from the borough, there were comments as far as adding the list of property owners on the plans, providing a detail of a pizza oven, because we're proposing an oven in the building, and those were revised and submitted to the Board.
Now, to that end, it's the... These proposed pizzeria, it's the new plans consisting of three sheets and revised September 16, 2025, is that correct?
Correct.
And did you personally prepare these plans?
I did, yes.
And your signature and seal appears on them, correct?
Correct.
Now, you briefly touched on it. Did you do all the renovations you made? Could you just articulate them so it's clearly for the record?
So, yeah, I measured the existing space, and what we're proposing would be Sheet A3, which has a floor plan of the building. And basically, we're removing all the walls inside. Their existing bathroom was non-accessible. It was small, it was like three by... There were two bathrooms. They're like three by five. So basically, we're removing the ceiling, the wall, wall finishes, floors, and what we're... The entrance is an existing door that has access to West Main Street. That would be the accessible entrance to the building. And currently, the width of the building is 16 feet 3 inches, and it's 99 feet long. And what we're proposing is you come into an open dining area, a pizza counter behind the pizza counter, and then we'll have a pizza oven behind that pizza counter. As you walk toward the back, there'll be a counter, like almost like a bar, but it's a pizza dining bar, and a small dining area behind there, and a small dining area in the front. Then, as we go to the back, there's two handicap bathrooms. They're in the location of where the plumbing is currently, but they are going to propose to be accessible. Then, we have the back room, utility storage for the pizzeria. Then, as you go toward the back, there's about three or four steps that go to a door that has access to the rear of the building. This is not accessible because as you go around the block, obviously, the property is higher than the front, so that's the difference in grade. But we do have two means of egress. So the entire space will be gutted and renovated to new. This is the sheet that was revised with the list of property owners. Also have a detail of the exhaust hood for the pizza oven. The pizza oven or the exhaust of the pizza oven is not for smoke, but it's for heat, which will penetrate the roof. Then, I have Sheet A1, which shows... It's another smaller version of the survey, zoning map showing the location of the site. Then, I have a proposed front elevation. Currently, there's wood slats that are painted red, white, and tan, and our proposal is to really, same thing, remove all the finishes, stucco the building, a white off-white to match the building next door, and new fenestration within the openings of the window that's there and the door. They will all be glass. Currently, what was there, the glass was hidden, it was screened, so you really couldn't see in. But we're going to continue the concept of that really what's going on on Main Street is glass. You can look in, see the dining area, see the staff, and see really what's going on inside. So again, the proposal will be stucco the entire facade. So the width of the building is 16 feet 3 inches, and it's 17 feet high. So it's actually higher than it is in width. And so what we're proposing is, again, replacing the glass doors, replacing the glass fenestration that's there, stuccoing the building, and we're proposing a sign. Now, this sign will also have a background of white, so it's almost going to match the stucco. So the perception of having a sign that we're proposing, three and a half feet, three feet 6 inches high, where 24 inches is permitted, where... And seven feet wide, so we're asking for a signed variance of 24.5 square feet where 16.8 square feet is permitted. Now, that's because of the narrow width of the building. It's one square foot of area per width of the building. So what we felt was, we needed a little bit more height because the building is higher than it is wider. And again, the color of the background with the black letters and the black symbol of a pizza, it kind of blends into the stucco finish. So we felt like, yeah, we're asking for a variance, but we felt that it's going to blend into the facade. And then the sign will be top lit with two goose net lights.
Okay, now, there's been... We've received some review correspondence. Have you had the opportunity to review the...
Yes, I have.
Go through it?
Yes.
And with respect to the fire official's review correspondence of November 6, 2025, do you foresee any issues with the proposed comments? Specifically, he was requesting certain safety features be provided at the...
Not at all. I think one of the items that he was asking was the... Sorry. Was to provide a... Well, we will have fire alarms, smoke detectors, visual alarms in the bathrooms and the building. He was also asking for a sprinkler system where, at first, you know, code, New Jersey building code, this building doesn't... It's well below the threshold of where fire sprinklers are permitted. So I know one of his questions was, can we provide it? If that's an issue, then yes.
So the applicant would be willing, if the Board requires, to provide such...
Otherwise, fire alarms, visual alarms, audio alarms, those are code-related items that we would follow.
So the applicant, whatever the construction official requires...
Yes.
Will be complied with?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to the Board Planner/Engineer Review Correspondence, do you agree with the bulk waiver and variance charts appearing on Page 3 and 4?
Yes, I do, and I also have that on the upper left-hand corner. They match as far as the variances that we're asking for, which would be the area of the sign where 16.8 is permitted. We're asking for 24.5, and maximum height where two foot is permitted, we're asking for three and a half. And that's the reason we asked for two and a half is, if we had a two-foot sign in this more of a rectangle upright building, we wanted the sign to follow that same shape of the building.
So you believe the sign, it would look better with the... If a smaller sign wouldn't, you know, wouldn't fit the character and space of the neighborhood?
Correct, yes.
Okay. With respect to Item A1, is the dumpster enclosure large enough to store solid waste and recyclables?
So yes, there's two dumpsters in the rear of the property, recyclables and trash. And obviously, this is a new business. We're not sure of the scheduling, but it's a private dumpster, so we couldn't have that on a daily basis or as needed by the service.
And now, with respect to item... Oh. Yeah.
Apologize. Are you sharing the dumpster with the restaurant next door?
Yes.
So they're going to coordinate extra pickups as necessary?
Correct. And it could be daily?
It's a five-days service. It's a daily service that he would have, you know. And again, that's a new business. This is... Hasn't started, but whatever that schedule needs to be, yes, but at a minimum, daily.
Thank you.
Yep.
And the coordination certainly won't be an issue. They, you know, it's the same operator.
Right. Same operator, same, right, applicant, same.
Now, with respect to Item Number 2, is the exhaust fan in public view from the sidewalk located on the southern side of Main Street?
So, no, not from the right-of-way of the sidewalk. It's one story high. It's 18, 17 feet high is the parapet. We're about 30 feet back. It probably may be visible. I know the building next door is about five stories high. I think they could see everything on all the buildings. If screening needs to be provided...
The concern was on the southern side, near Wolfgang's, on that side of Main Street. Can you see it? Because I don't think that building has a parapet wall. So you have almost three, you know, two and a half, three feet sticking up. If... It's the Board's call, but I'd like to see lattice, some PVC lattice, just to screen it so that we're covering...
We require that almost all the other...
Right.
We would absolutely not.
If it's visible.
If it's visible, that's what I'm saying. I'm looking at the other...
If you guys require...
I agree with you that on the sidewalk right in front of it, you're not going to see it. The question is, on Alfonso's or the other side of the street, is it visible?
Right. Yeah. If it's not visible, it doesn't need to be screened.
Right.
We don't have a problem. And screening too, we can have a fabric for sound or noise for AC units or whatever, but we can provide for that, absolutely.
Okay. Same. With respect to Item Number 4, do you know whether the sound data will exceed the New Jersey noise code?
It should not, but we could have a... Once it's installed, we can have a test of the sound, and if needed, a noise barrier can be installed.
So the applicant would agree to that?
Absolutely, yes.
With respect to Item Number 1, Page 7, do you know the level and source of illumination of the lights, the downward lights?
So all lighting exterior will be LED lighting. I don't have an illumination of... We haven't picked the bulb yet, but we can have them on dimmers.
Yeah.
Or we can meet the criteria for lighting.
Okay. Like the applicant, if there was a lighting issue, would agree to review and...
Absolutely, we could absolutely.
Right.
Can we stop on the trash dumpster enclosure?
Yes.
There are separate lots, and I understand one party owns them all, but for the future, that might not be the case. In the past, should the Board do it, we've gotten a simple cross-access easement to allow future property owners of this two or three businesses to use the dumpster, so that we don't have a problem in the future if one parcel's sold and all of a sudden, we have the OK Corral. You can't use it. Yes, I can. It just makes sense, should the Board...
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Just some simple cross-access...
I believe this dumpster is on... Is it on this lot?
Yes.
Yeah, it's on this lot, yeah.
It's on this lot, and it makes perfect sense for the two other businesses or one of the businesses to use it. It makes perfect sense.
Yeah, I would think the restaurant needs...
Right. So...
But yes, we would agree and have that part of the approval should be approved.
Now, with respect to Item Number 3, do you know the proposed hours of operation of the exterior lighting?
So obviously, the hours of operation of the pizzeria is 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. So obviously, the lights would be dusk to and to opening, to closing.
And so it wouldn't run all night?
No, it wouldn't run, no.
Now, with respect to Item Number 4, please advise whether supports and brackets for the sign shall be constructed of metal not less than quarter inch thick, if galvanized, and not less than three inches, three sixteenths inches thick, if all members included bolts and rivets are galvanized?
They will be. There's no... There's no projection of brackets. There's no projections of a cage or steel hole. And this is up against the facade, bolted into the building, all galvanized, yes, weatherproof.
With respect to Item Number 5, will the sign be securely attached to the building by means of metal anchors, bolts, or expansion screws?
Yes, absolutely.
And with Item 7, I know we briefly touched on it before, but what are the proposed colors for the sign, including the pizza slice?
So the background is white, and the lettering and pizza's symbol is dark brown lettering.
If we can... I understand that you're going to produce color renderings. Typically, the ARB reviews these things. Should the Board grant approval, condition ARB approval back to the... To avoid the issue of where the ARB is reporting to, since this is a land use application, and Kara chime in, but I think the Board can have the ARB review it and give comments back. Typically, we have color renderings.
We can have the sign...
And I understand that you don't have that here, and typically, in the past, we've had the ARB look at those renderings and make a recommendation. The ordinance doesn't require you to get ARB approval before the planning board, so you can do it, should the Board approve this, condition upon ARB approval.
Correct.
That's what the Board likes to say.
Yes, thank you.
So we don't have to spend all this time.
Going over...
I spent time on it because I know the black and white. I know the Board's interested, and the borough's really interested on the color aesthetics, the color of your sign, how it's going to look in the overall, but you could address that, should the Board agree with the ARB, and they would make a recommendation back to the planning board regarding those...
I was going to say, I think the recommendation needs to come back to the planning board, though, since it is a land use application.
And we agree. If there's any comments that we need to change, we have no problem.
The window space, yeah, obviously, more inviting the 40% rule. I'm sure you will comply with the storefront glass being 40% of the whole facade, or...
So that's the thing. So the overall height of the building is 285 square feet.
Okay.
It's an eight-foot-high ceiling, so we're only... We're currently, if I... We have a glass door. We have almost a full wall of glass. We're at 20%. There's not much more space. Maybe you get to 25 or 30, but...
You're receiving... Listen, if you can't... The whole intent is inviting to show...
That's what exactly...
To get the input.
Not what you're getting now with the...
We are seeking a waiver on that issue, just because of the physical...
From my perspective, I'd like to see as much glass as possible.
And us too. You could see the pizzeria. You could see the people sitting and dining.
And you could see we try. There's the door and the window here.
We could probably get more lower glass, as far as we can go, but it's not going to be 40%, I could tell you. And we're stuck with that width of 16.
I get it. I'm just making sure we covered all this.
No, we're trying. We are absolutely trying to get that as close to...
You mentioned that you'd go further, lower on the wall.
We could do... We could do here.
And what about further up closer to the sign, so that the sign is...
Well, the ceiling is right there.
Yeah.
So you'd be looking above the drop ceiling.
What if you slanted the drop ceiling at that point?
I could...
I don't... Yeah. I hear what you're saying. I just think that's a lot to ask of an applicant, just because I do understand. I think we all understand and respect their... I do hear what you're saying, but I think that's kind of pushing it.
And also, as you're walking along the street, that's typical door height with neighbors, so I guess to push that up may look out of proportion, but we can go lower in as far wide.
It's just a uniquely narrow...
Thank you.
Now, are you... With respect to Item Number 2, do you know what the existing parking lot light levels are?
Parking levels?
Lot light in the rear, or whether it is lit?
So that's... I'm not sure. I've never been there at night.
Fair enough.
There is lighting from, as I speak to the applicant.
We could... If the applicant's going to provide testimony, that's great, but we can just swear him in maybe now, so...
Yeah, let's...
Let's do that, just for the record.
You want to stand up, Razor? You can come up. Want to be...
Thank you so much. Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give this board? Is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, and just state your name, spell it for the record.
Skender Jevukaj.
Thank you. Need him to spell that, Mike? You're okay. You're good. Very simple. Very simple.
Gobbi Kenny.
Now that we're on and we swore you in, could you briefly just describe what your relationship is to this application?
I'm the owner of the property. I'm the owner of the restaurant, owner also of the next door. We're trying to do like a pizzeria. It's going to be like a small pizzeria, a few tables, and a small bar, and try to bring the central pizza back, pretty much what they had, just cleaning your... Up to date.
Now, what... Now, could you... We're talking about the rear lighting in the parking lot.
Rear lighting in the parking lot. There is one pole of mine, and then it's lights on other buildings shining towards me. I think it's plenty of parking. If I put more parking, it's just going to distract the neighbors, because it's pretty much being residential, but it's enough light to move around, obviously.
Yeah, we're going to have a light meter for the front. Just shoot, as long as you have .3-foot candles, something in the rear.
Yeah, it's plenty.
I understand it's not... It's the employee entrance. It's probably not for the general public to use, so...
Could you just give... You might as well give testimony as to what your hours of operation will be?
Hours of operation is going to be like Monday to Sunday. During the weekdays, it's going to be 11 to 10, 11 to 11. Depends on the traffic. On a Sunday, we're going to close at 9:00 p.m.
And approximately about how many employees would the pizzeria have?
They're now like... The week is about like eight, and the weekdays, four or five.
Because it varies based on the demand.
Yes, of course. It's a very small space, a very narrow space. There's really not much to have.
I mean, we kind of got out of order here, but we're going to get back to the architect. I don't know. If you guys had any questions, I would certainly... I don't have any objection to asking them now. If not, I mean, we could... You could ask them later, too. If we need them, we'll bring them back, but let's go back to the architect.
I can tell you for the record, I've been doing work in many towns, restaurants, food establishments with this applicant, and he's a welcome tenant in any building, quality food, quality service, and especially the way he dresses up the spaces, a welcoming person to any town.
Okay, now, we're back to the review correspondence. With respect to Item Number 4, will any externally mounted HVAC or compressors for walk-in refrigerators be utilized?
Not only if they are on the roof, the mechanical units. There is one there now, but yes, any equipment that's required would be on the roof, and obviously, any screening, noise, they would be...
So the applicant would screen if it could be seen as required.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
So any new equipment... So any new equipment going on the roof will be screened if it's needed and comply with the state noise code?
Yes.
Absolutely, yeah, without, no question. With respect to item number five, will the exhaust fan cause dissemination of excess smoke, fumes, gas, dust, odors, or other atmospheric pollutant beyond the lot lines?
No, so I've done a, a few of these pizza ovens that exhaust through the roof, they're mainly for heat, they're not for smoke exhausting, it's just for exhausting the heat out of the oven.
And because it's 200, 200 CFM, you don't need makeup air, correct?
We don't, exactly.
So you're not going to have.
If it did hit, the code would be, yes, but it's not under, it's below 400.
I spent my homework on this, didn't I?
And we appreciate that. Now, and in your conclusions about this application, do you have any opinion as to whether the proposed project embodies good civic design and arrangement?
I think it's a positive use, obviously, the traffic along Main Street with all the buildings that are going, it generates people walking on Main Street, which is what you want, you know, with all the new stores going up, and I think it just adds to the atmosphere of Main Street.
Now, do you believe that the existing facades as it stands currently is consistent with the current streets, streetscape?
Uh, no, not at all. It's wood slats, the windows are closed in, it's, it's not inviting, it's not promoting, generate, generating any clients, in my, in my opinion.
Now, would, would the updated proposal being here, brought here tonight, do you believe that would improve and be more compliant with the immediate neighborhood?
Absolutely, the more glass, the more that, you know, he wants people to look in, yes, absolutely.
And do you believe that the larger sign would be beneficial to customers trying to find the restaurant as a?
Yes, I don't think, I, I don't think the size, the size of the proposed sign is negative, I think it does, like I said, the background kind of blends into the finish, so it's really the lettering and the symbol, so no, I don't think there's any negativity to this sign.
And, and we, as testified, will stip, you know, stipulate to a, a further approval of the actual, you know, design of the sign.
And the pavers were redone over, and technically, there's not a street tree, but it's 16 feet wide and the pavers are done over, so it's, it's the board, the board's call on how that street tree is handled, 16 feet, it's one tree and 50 feet, there is a tree nearby, and the pavers were.
Are you Larry?
The pavers were done, I'm going to say, within eight years ago, the whole, that, how, that property has the new look, the new paver look, so what I'm saying is.
I would say that, considering that this application is directly related to the other two restaurants, what are we doing with the missing tree from that side, or is the DSA going to take care of it? Huh?
Why is everybody looking at that?
Well, because you're the boss, that's why, and I just, I'm just curious.
Because I don't want to touch that.
Well, I, I, I'm going to back up, it's not two restaurants, and, and I, I'm assuming that these two businesses, while they may be owned by the same owner, are not the same business, am I correct in that?
Yeah, I have nothing, I don't know anything about that.
So, so.
But my point is that there was a tree that might have been there before.
We have to go by what does the code mandate?
Yeah.
What?
Technically, it's one tree, but I'm putting on the report, it's 16 feet, and there's a tree, I don't think it's appropriate, in my opinion, to have a tree every 16 feet, I don't think, the storefront is being penalized.
That's true.
Right, but, but they're still responsible for a tree.
They're responsible for the tree, and in the report, I say, the board can either, in my opinion, either request the $650 or waive the financial contribution, given unique circumstances, it's the board's call.
Yeah, I, I, I would, I would go back to the applicant and say, are, are you open to the idea of, of making a contribution to the street tree fund, which would, which would amount to?
$650.
$650.
In lieu of having to put a tree in.
Yeah.
We will agree to that, not a problem.
Thank you.
All right, so that issue, yeah, I guess.
Note that, Larry.
I, I, you know, I, can I, just one more question, all these plans that we, that were board-mounted today, they were submitted previously to the board, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, I'm, I have no further questions, if you guys would like to ask another question.
I just have one quick question, when we talked about revisions to the plans, we did talk about a revision to A1, I guess that last revision was September 16, 2025, were there revisions to A2 and A3?
So, yeah, not A2, because that was the engineer's survey.
Okay.
That, A3, I added the pizza oven detail.
Okay.
And the list of property owners within 200 feet.
Okay, so that revision date would be?
It's on this first, same revision.
9/16?
9/16, yeah.
Perfect, all right, thank you.
So we don't have any cooking oil, so we don't have to deal with used cooking oil?
No grease traps, no, absolutely.
It's just the pizza oven?
Correct.
So it's a B vent?
Right, straight.
Okay. The other thing in the report is, there's three or four parking spaces on the rear near the dumpster, unfortunately, given the type of commercial use, one of those spaces, if it remained, has to be an ADA parking space, just the way it is.
That's fine, yeah, we could designate one and, and stripe it and.
Yeah.
Symbolize it, yeah, yes.
Do you guys have any questions, I don't know, open it to the public.
All right, I'll open it to the planning board, questions, comments for the applicant?
Is there, is there another ADA spot back there?
No, not existing in that back lot, no.
It's really not meant, not that it's meant for public, but it can be, but no, there is not one in there, I guess, even myself, when I used to come, I'd park in the back, you know, and walk.
It's a hidden secret, don't tell people.
Don't.
Is there any spot ADA, is there even a way for someone to get around there?
They'd have to go onto Davenport, come around, because there is no, there's two doors, one to the new restaurant that he has, and one to the, to what we're, our proposed building, but they're.
They're raised, don't they?
About three or four feet lower than the front, so they'd have to walk around, which is probably more dangerous than, or, you know.
Yeah.
One of those requirements, yeah.
Yeah, you're required to have the ADA.
We just can't get around that, unfortunately.
Right.
Not a problem.
In theory, it's for the employees, if it's not for the public.
Yeah.
There's two accesses, there is an easement, which is shown the plans, the easement wasn't provided, but there's an easement to get to the rear of the property to facilitate loading deliveries.
Yeah.
Mike, did you address the door between the two businesses?
The, there's a door that, my understanding is to remain, the fire marshal would like to see it, and I think it's by code, it has to be a fire-rated door.
Yes.
And the fire rating in the literature is either going to be a two or three hour, it depends on what the rating of a wall is, the partition wall, so.
Usually, it's a door on the property line, which is, could be a three hour.
Right, so whatever.
That's probably why he came up with the fire.
I think it's a two-hour door, but I'm assuming that masonry wall is eight inches, if it's 12 inches, it might be a three hour, whatever the code requires.
So they'll comply, that's our question.
They'll comply, correct, thank you.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there a plan for any outdoor seating?
No.
Is there any or not any for any other building?
The neighboring building?
No, on this, we may potentially in the future, yes.
And that, that's governed by a separate borough ordinance.
Yeah, that would be a totally separate, unrelated application.
You just said it here as the restaurant bar, is it actually a bar?
No. It is a bar. It is a bar. He does have a license for the whole. Yeah, so yes, I'm sorry.
Did we come to consensus on the planning board about the sprinkler system? Yay, nay, no opinion?
I think if they're offering to put it in, I think it's a life safety thing, that would be a great addition to have, since we're renovating it.
Yeah.
I concur.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're all on the same page on the planning board.
So like I said, we, we will do strobe lighting, or this doesn't fall under that threshold, but it's part of an approval, yet.
Yes.
To us, we look at it as it's an improvement to existing.
Yes, if, if we're approved, we will.
And, and in a very dense downtown with buildings abutting each other.
Especially 16 feet away.
It makes, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah. All right, anything else from the planning board? All right, I am going to open it up to public comment. Hearing none, I will close public session. Kara, you want to run through that?
Yes, I just have two questions, well, I guess one question, the issue of the variance for the storefront window glazing, I know we talked about that a little bit, but your requirement is that there's, should be a minimum of 40% of storefront window glazing, they won't be able to do that, so if we're going to grant a variance, we have to grant a variance for a certain amount less than 40%, so I don't know what the applicant's proposing.
Does it have to be?
What was it that you were proposing?
So by replacing the, the glass door, the existing glass that's there, we're at 20%, we'll try to go lower.
So let's just say a minimum of 20%.
Right.
Yep.
It'll probably be more like 25 to 30, but yes.
With the, understanding the applicant's.
Not on that, no, they're only for the signs, for the color of the signs.
Create more glass.
Right.
Okay, so in addition to the other variances that are referenced in Mike's report, as well as minor site plan and change of use approval, the conditions that I would propose to the board are compliance with all comments and requests in Mike's letter marked PB1, to the extent that have, has not been testified by the applicant and his witnesses, compliance with the comments in PB2, as the board indicated with regard to sprinkler, et cetera, compliance with any and all construction code requirements, all other applicable laws and requirements, as we typically have as the catch-all, dumpster pickups will be scheduled as needed and as determined, once the businesses are in operation, there will, there will be a sound analysis completed once construction is completed, and there will be any adjustments to that as necessary if the analysis does not fall within the state code requirements, the applicant will prepare cross-access easements for any adjacent property owners that are going to be using the dumpster, and submit that easement to the board professionals for review and approval, based upon the testimony, the lights will be on from dusk to closing, the sign colors will be as testified to, and a color rendering will be submitted to the ARB that will make its recommendations back to the board for ultimate review and approval as required, the hours of operation will be as testified to, any visible rooftop and other external equipment will be screened as necessary, the applicant will make the $650 tree contribution in lieu of planting the tree, the applicant will create one ADA parking space, the applicant, if they determine to engage any outdoor seating, will comply with the borough ordinance, or come back to the board for approval, the glazing, as we indicated, will be at least a minimum of 20%, and if I understood correctly, the, the liquor license for the adjacent use is going to be expanded into this property for use in connection with the pizzeria?
That's what I did.
That's the intention? Okay. That's already been done, so you have, okay, so I would just ask that proof of that expansion of the liquor license approval be submitted as a condition.
And that's what I have.
Then I'll, then I'll move it based on everything Kara just said.
Did I miss something?
Nope.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Bill Cale.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilman Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just before you leave, thank you for investing in Somerville, Central Pizzeria, that's the original location for Central Pizzeria for decades, and it was an icon in Somerville, and obviously, they at one point expanded into that space that Dofina is now in, and you've taken two spaces that have a long history, one of them, you've already made absolutely stunning and beautiful, and we'll see you Friday night, and we look forward to the same on this one as well, and thank you for investing in Somerville.
Thank you, guys, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Putting a lot of pressure on them to make good pizza nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone, thanks.
Okay, moving on to discussion items, Mike, you want to review the ordinance 2774 on the sidewalk cafes?
Yes, Chairman, Chairwoman, sorry, that, that ordinance puts the recommendations of the ARB back to the planning board for outdoor cafes, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but the board might want to weigh in and say, all ARB applications come back to the planning board, but if that's not what the scope is, I thought what the scope is.
Yeah, this, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'm just used to it, sorry.
I need a buzzer over here. Go ahead, Mayor.
So, so I'm sorry.
You're good.
So, no, I think, I think we need to just keep this to what it is, and essentially, as just a very quick overview, the borough is looking to tighten up the application process within the SID for the outdoor cafes, because it kind of got a little bit loose, it's tightening up the enforcement a little bit, it's tightening up the timeframes for applications so that they're in, in specified time periods, so that we have compliance and that we can inspect them correctly, it also allows for an increased width of travel on the sidewalks, so we're going from three feet to four, four feet, there was just great discussion at council about expanding that even further, and I think cooler heads prevailed, and four feet is a very appropriate width, and it will give added room to what is already a fairly appropriate width if all the restaurants would comply, so now we're going to four, which should make it even a little more roomier, so that's kind of the overview.
And to your comment, Mike, I, I do, I hear you, but I do think of, you know, being on the ARB as a member, this is the one that's completely appropriate that needed to come back here, we were looking at some really out-of-the-box thinking, and it's really not fair to put that on an ARB, it really belongs before the planning board, so this was the very appropriate portion of those outside ARB reviews, and then, I think this definitely, signs and those can stay for now, but I think this definitely, it was, they really didn't belong just by an ARB, some of those applications, so, any comments from the board?
I just had a couple, I don't know if they were comments or questions, looking at A, B, and C on page two, I think they may just be typos, so A says seasonal applications are due no later than March 31 annually, and no seasonal cafe shall not have a start date, so are we saying no seasonal cafe shall have a start date prior to April 1st?
Right.
Yeah, it's double negative.
That's usually how I talk.
Yeah, same.
I write differently than I talk, and then B, I think the second sex, second sentence in B, do we want to say all furniture must be removed from the cafe area, and an off-site location must be provided? Like, is, is the?
Two.
Two and off-site?
Two and off-site.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and off-site, storage location must be.
Or maybe just make a period there?
Yeah, I think it's two separate.
Period after area and make the off-site, okay, and then for C, I just want to make sure that makes sense to everybody, like, is that clear, clear enough for enforcement purposes to you guys?
Well, you know what, let's go back to that for a second, why are we requiring that they store furniture off-site, if they can store it on their site, and it's not obtrusive, and it's not blocking anything, why are we requiring?
I think this is leftover language.
Yes.
I don't think this was something that is new, I think they pulled this from the existing language.
I think the intent is that.
Oh, that.
It's not supposed to be leaned up against the, the building and saying, hey, we're storing.
You know, you know what it is, I think it was actually the old wooden deck during COVID.
Yes.
That's, yeah.
So do we want to say an off-site area must be provided if it cannot be stored inside?
So do we want to say an off-site area must be provided if it cannot be stored inside? Like, is that your intention?
Yeah, because to the mayor's point, if they can get it inside and it's in a place that's, there's no reason we need to make them find an off-site.
Why say anything? I want to say all furniture must be removed from the cafe area.
Period.
Yes.
I think, I hear you, but I think we need to be clear that that includes a storage, that was part of that problem, is that they were removing it, but then they were putting it into a storage bin in that area. So, yes, on the sidewalk.
Off the sidewalk.
Yeah, so as long as it says removed from the cafe area.
Yeah.
Period.
Right.
How about we just say to include no storage in the cafe area, too?
Yeah.
That covers that all, that issue that we had years ago where them.
So all furniture and furniture storage areas must be removed from?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me take out the last sentence. And then, maybe it was just me and I was reading this too late, but I'm not sure I understood the intention of C.
So I can go into it. We were there for this, and then I'll chime in, Jason. This issue came up numerous times for specific restaurants like Dunkin' Donuts. What was the other one that came?
Cheese Shop.
Cheese Shop. Where you're not actually serving customers, right? You're not going out like at Alfonso's or at Cafe Picasso, where you're actually serving on the cafe, in the sidewalk. The concern from everybody at that point was, once you introduce and allowing them to go closer to the, let's say, the curb line, now you have waiters, waitresses, waitstaff going back and forth through traffic, pedestrian traffic. So we said, we didn't want to restrict it completely, but we wanted to say it's only appropriate for those that don't have that. It's basically self-seating areas, like a Dunkin' Donuts, the cheese shop. You buy something, yeah, you buy something and then you're going to go sit outside. So we're restricting it to those type cases only. So they can't be, no wait service and they can't be serving alcohol.
Okay, all right, so if there's an application where they want to put it adjacent to the roadway, that's fine, as long as you don't have any wait service or alcohol.
And/or alcohol, yep.
If it's immediately adjacent to the building, it doesn't matter. You can have whatever, whatever you need. However, in both cases, I got it. Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
I have a question. Is there any limit to, like, the area that law do? Can it only be in front of their business?
Only within front of their building.
No, unless they have an agreement with the adjacent property owner. So there are a number of restaurants that do that. They, at night, they creep because those businesses close, and they creep across.
So like, in this case where, you know, the individual owns both buildings, they can?
Absolutely.
With tables and all, and they call this on the application.
On the application, and then it comes back to us for approval.
Yeah, and the current process, yeah, the current process with that is that it would go to the ARB with proof that they have permission from the existing other buildings. So the same would happen here.
Yeah, I think that's great that, you know, we're enabling them.
Yeah.
Kind of Somerville all even better.
Agreed.
Any other comments from the board? Okay.
A motion to send it back to council with those changes.
So those would be the recommendations, and otherwise, it's consistent with the master plan based upon Mike's.
Yeah.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addix.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
William, Bill Cale.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, next ordinance, 2777, amendment to chapter 10269, land use checklist.
Yes, thank you. 10269 is the checklist for all land use applications. It's a general checklist. You have a minor, slight, plan major, but all applicants, and going to any board, needs to do the checklist of 10269. This adds a paragraph that says anything that's substantial and it's defined as 5,000 square feet or more needs to go to the council first, for the council to weigh in, whether they have to be designated, redeveloped, or waived, or whatever the council wants to do. Now, this language, we've got a, the redevelopment attorney, Chris Ngaro, sent an email saying he would like the language slightly tweaked, so I'm just going to read it to you. It's not much. He says that he would like the language from, shall be designated redeveloped by the Borough Council to be changed to, shall require a redeveloped designation by Borough Council. So that one little tweak in the language that clarifies what's going on. So in summary, all this does is you can't be deemed complete until the application goes to council and council makes a determination how this is going to proceed, whether they have to be designated, they are, or it can be waived by the council. Once that's done, they will fulfill that checklist item. But it's a checklist. For the history, real quickly, in the past, we've done, the Borough has done this on the back end, conditioned approvals about redevelopment designation and redevelopment agreement. Isn't that correct, Colin?
Yep.
So this just puts it up front a little bit to get some of that housekeeping out of the way up front.
Any comment from the board? Concerns, questions?
And this was introduced by the Borough Council in our last.
Yep, so we can send this. I don't think, with those amendments, we would, and I think this is definitely in line with our master plan, so.
So moved.
So move with the amendments, okay.
With the amendments, with Chris's email.
Yeah, with Chris's amendment.
Okay.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addix.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Bill Cale. Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio, or Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay. Got to love agendas where you're going to flip a page. All right.
The next one, ordinance 2779. This is the inclusionary ordinance that was draft, this board saw in June. The statute allows the Borough to get all the enabling ordinances in place by March of 2026. So that's why it was draft in June. It wasn't required. This just adopts it. The only change is some of the language up front was more flexibility. The one paragraph was changed from what the board saw in June. Other than that, it's identical. It allows, it basically puts an overlay zone on the whole Borough. I look at as inclusionary being, it's the same thing, overlay inclusionary. What you're doing is saying any development application that produces five or more dwelling units has an affordable obligation throughout the town. It doesn't matter where you are. It's overlay on the whole Borough. So I don't know how you can go wrong with that, because you're treating everyone the same.
Everyone the same.
And we're saying, we don't know where the development's going to be, but where it is, we're going to capture that affordable housing. So this just gets the, from a draft to the ordinance on the books, just so the planning board knows, the development fee ordinance, which is the percentage you have to pay if you're not doing, you say you're doing three, four-bedroom apartment building or something, not four bedrooms, four units. You're under five. The development fee ordinance says that you have to pay a percentage of the equalized assessed value into the Affordable Housing Fund that will be used for rehab and so forth. So the Borough's already capturing any development that's under the five to 20%. So that's already on the books. So this is the other side that captures everything, the small developments and now the larger developments. These two ordinances capture it.
And to confirm, this is an overlay zone that's going over the entire Borough?
Yes.
Correct. Just wanted to make sure that's very clear.
I think the actual language is inclusionary, but it says overlay, too. It's the same thing.
Very, I just want to make sure it's very clear. Comments, questions from the board? Okay, I think, well, it's definitely in line with our housing plan and our master plan, so I would propose to push it forward.
Yep, so moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addix.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Bill Cale. Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, B5, Mike.
Okay, we last left the last planning board meeting that we were going to look, the board was going to look into allowing or entertaining educational facilities in the B5, which is basically along the highways. It's the strip center to allow infill, to give more flexibility. So what you see in front of you is the NAICS, NAICS classifications for the various entities that are involved with educational facilities. So you have, the elementary and secondary schools, obviously, is inappropriate. The technical trade schools, maybe, if you look at the definitions. So these are the codes that, should the board want to recommend, would be one of these, or all of them, or none of them. So AI, the, college universities and professional schools, that may be too small space for some of the strip centers we have, the Borough has. But it's something that, you see the definition, the descriptions are in here. The computer training, absolutely. Professional management and development training, that could be small scale, in my opinion. The fine art school, that can be small scale, too. So the only thing that screams at me that might be inappropriate is.
The first two.
The first one. It's the first two, correct. The first two is, that's my two cents on it.
All right, open it for board comment.
So, so we already have, I mean, if you look at Immaculata High School, they're essentially on the highway.
They're, they're in a, an R-zone. They're not in the.
Their address is actually Mountain Ave.
It is, okay.
Yes, it's an R-zone.
Because they front the ramp onto 22.
It's, Mountain Avenue there is the R-zone.
Okay, all right.
Also, that school's quite been there before, they had lanes developed.
Yes, yeah.
So it's going to be grandfathered or?
Yeah, well, I just, what I'm projecting is if there's an expansion of the school at some point, not that I, not that I know they are, it just, I'm looking at it saying, if they expand and they go onto their parking, into their parking lot, whatever.
And that would be that R-zone, they'd be covered.
So we wouldn't be restricted.
Because this is only for the B5, yep.
Okay.
Right. So this for the board certification, there is a C2 that got a use variance about 10 years ago, next to the Kitty Academy, right near the Hess Gas Station.
Yes.
Okay, that, there's a C2 in there that got a use variance, I'm going to say 10 years ago. And I think that's really like an educational support services. If you look at the 710, it's the.
Yeah, I don't think it falls under elementary or secondary. And I don't think it falls under college universities or professional schools.
But I think it would fall in the other categories.
Yes.
So in the last 20 years, the Borough's seen one educational facility get a use variance. And I'm just telling you what it is. It's a C2.
Yep.
That I think the intent is to try to avoid those types of applications. They add flexibility, so.
Wouldn't the education part of it be, we call it ancillary, to the primary of that school, is that it's a daycare center?
It's actually.
The school part of it is.
Yeah, totally different.
Totally different use.
Yeah.
That building has three or four tenants. The one on the west end is the Kitty, the daycare. The one on the far.
North.
The north end is the C2 educational. To answer your question, yes.
No other comments, questions? All right, I agree with you, Mike. I would like it to remove the first two. I don't think they're appropriate in that B5 zone. But I think the others allow a lot of flexibility to open up. Specifically, I know there's not really one for AI, right? But I think out of all the remaining one, two, three, four, five, definitely can, it can fit in there with no problem.
You can certainly make that recommendation, just so the board's aware. The majority of the codes in the Borough Ordinance, Schedule A or SIC codes, standard industrial classification codes, but they've been phased out since 87. So instead of reinventing the wheel, it says in the ordinance on the Schedule A, as currently defined in the current NAICS. So as this gets mended, the new code goes in. So you'll see some that has three digits that are SIC. And then you'll see, should the council agree with this, you'll see the four, five, six-digit NAICS codes. I'm just giving you the background.
As we update to the update.
Saying what's going on here.
Yep.
Call, SIC, you're using NAICS, what are we doing? Long and short of it is, to save the expense in doing the whole thing over again, we're doing it over again as it goes. And it clarifies that the zoning officer is using the current NAICS code for determining the use, and then in doing the cross back to SIC code to handle the situation.
And then one last thing for the board, you know, we did say we're relooking at all zoning. So in this zone, was there anything that you saw that you wanted removed? Because we can check this zone off now. Okay, all right, there we go.
Do we need to?
We need a motion.
Motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
Make a motion to send that recommendation up to council for the B5 district?
Second.
Andrea Dare. Chris Addix.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Bill Cale.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember of room.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, so now we're up to our reexamine and amendment of the ECBD, which is our Eastern Central Business District. This is where we have been tasked with reviewing this specific redevelopment plan. I know Mike has some portions that we're going to look at, and then we'll go into further detail as a whole on this redevelopment plan afterwards. So go ahead.
Thank you. What the members have is the concept plan that the board saw June, Colin? Was it June?
Probably, somewhere around there.
Okay, and basically, the concept plan had reduced the scale of the, from my understanding, the original drawing. You have, it was in the email, I went through the ECBD. I don't think you had it in a hard, hard copy, but you had it.
It was in our email, though.
So I can certainly, what I basically did is I went through the stuff that I know is going to need to be tweaked for the ECBD. And there were basically setbacks on, from veterans, buffers onto the POR zone. And I can read that down. The one thing that I wanted to spend time with, should the board, is the height. I had said, I had reduced the height to 60 feet. And from looking at it, there's a, there's a, something going on with the elevations. The set you have doesn't have the C8, which the set I have, I think from June, does, I'm sorry, it's A8. And it lists the total height is 58.5 feet. You don't have this. This is the one sheet. It's not, I don't know why it's not in the packages. But if you want to pass this, it just gives you the elevations. I don't, I think 60 feet is too low. If it's 58, I'm not comfortable at 60. I was recommending 60. There's a parapet. I think in reality, it should be 67 feet or so to get it down based on this. Again, we don't have finalized plans. So I'll whip through the comments.
Just, I'm, just want to make sure I'm understanding. You're saying changing it from 61 to 67, based on your current recommendation, as your maximum?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I was understanding.
The charge was to look at the concept plan and come up with what needs to be changed on the concept plan. So I went through it, and it's in your package, but. Number one comment, I'm just going to read it to you, since you don't have the hard copy and the paper in front of you. There is a requirement for a transition zone, the POR, which is along Hamilton Street. Those properties are in the POR zone. The southward corner of the building is located within 40 feet of the POR zone. Okay, that is saying that the height. So the solution to that is to, with the exception, what I, I know we're looking at the ECBD. We're going to be looking at it for the content style and for the area. I'm proposing that we handle these changes as addendums. I don't have to go in the report multiple times. Just slap it to the end as an addendum and list specific lots and blocks that this is applicable to. I think that's the easiest way of handling this without ripping through the whole plan, which we're going to do anyhow.
Right, so that was leading me to one of my comments, which you and I have spoken about, is that I really feel like this area needs to be peeled off from the whole plan so that it still allows us time, which we're going to discuss after this, to go through the rest of the ECBD in detail, because this is appropriate for this area, but it might not be appropriate for the rest of it. And we want to make sure we get that right as a whole, and we're not just doing this because this is all we have in front of us right now, so.
Yeah, the actual language is the depth of the buffer shall be not less than 25 feet or one foot for each foot of building height of the portion of buildings or buildings located within 100 feet of the EPR. It's the PR zone. This project does not comply with that. So all I said was, with the exception of developments, I list the lots and blocks, which just says that this.
It's appropriate in this area, but maybe not others right now.
So the plan is to make an addendum and list the lots and blocks for this and come up and pointedly say it's not applicable and the reasons why, to make it clear in an addendum. I was, Colin, I.
That makes a lot of sense. That makes a, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, makes a lot of sense.
So we can all get our head around, if I start going in the redevelopment plan, because this project's in two overlay zones. What about this one, and what about this one?
Yeah.
You start doing this stuff, and it's easy to miss, if we just make an addendum and list the lots and blocks.
Yeah.
This is applicable, I think we can, it's much easier for everyone to follow, so.
Yeah, and that, because this also has concept approval from both the council and, and the planning board.
Yes.
So, yeah, so we're splitting it off, and, and it's in a different phase of development.
Yes.
Okay, then it's the height.
So what, on the height, you were saying that the height's changing, what is the concern?
The, the concern is, we don't know the actual height, because the actual plans aren't here. So, there's two concerns with the height, is technically, the decks, the parking decks are counted as stories. I'm trying to get away from that, because it's confusing what's the story and what's not. So I took the story out and said a maximum height.
Overall height.
Overall height of sixty feet. If you look at these plans, the confu, the concern I have was, was I accounting for the, uh, do I, am I covering, am I capturing this with the height reduction? And I'm looking at that one set plans, it's fifty-eight point eight, which to me, I'm not comfortable with that.
But that didn't include the parapet either.
Didn't include the parapet, and I would like to ha, have more wiggle room than sixty feet.
So, so we're going, just to make sure we're all clear, we're going from, the original was seventy-five feet, then you said sixty, now you're asking to go up to sixty-seven.
I'm saying yes.
To cover any?
Cover and to take the story out of the definition, list the maximum.
Yes.
I, I don't wanna get involved in stories, because, because of the parking decks, you have parking decks.
No, and I think that's one lesson we learned in a lot of the redevelopment areas, is that we, when we were using the stories, it was, we were actually constraining a lot of, um, design elements. Um, I like it better where it's just an overall height that we're looking for.
Yes.
Or height restriction, I should say.
Is the height issue an aesthetics thing, or a safety, like a fire thing? What is the concern, or what is the only factor?
It's aesthetics, and is it appropriate in that area?
Yeah, we, so if, if, in your packet, you'll see, uh, the, both the council and the board had gone through and felt that the massing of the building was too large for that corner, when you come around off of Gaston, you're coming down East Main or the other way, it was just too imposing. So the, uh, the project said, okay, let's, let us go back and take a look at it, actually brought it down a story. So I'm assuming on, on their initial, when they were at the seventy feet, that didn't include the parapet either, so that's what I would assume.
I don't think so.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so it is aesthetics, but it's, but it's also density and massing, so it's a little bit of everything.
And this height calculation would include the parapet?
Yeah, I would like to, as a bonus of caution, include the parapet, so it's not into an issue whether a parapet is the over height.
Well, taking out the stories, I think we have to clarify that, because it's, it is truly the overall height, so the highest point of that building, no matter where it is, and even if it's only in one spot.
Inclusive.
Included or excluded, whatever you want.
Inclusive of design fenestrations.
Yes.
It should be, I said that the proposed, the height regarding the number of stories, I said regardless of number of stories, I clarified that as a height regardless of stories, so we don't have to deal with that, but I think sixty feet is too low, is what I'm basically saying.
And I am, I'm comfortable going to the sixty-seven, but I do like, I, I think we do need to clarify that that is for, let, any design finishes, anything, it doesn't. So the highest point of the building, no matter what it is, whether it's a story, whether it's a parapet, whether it's, I don't know, a steeple on top, it doesn't matter. The highest you're allowed is sixty-seven feet.
I will clarify that in the next revision.
Okay.
It says, so we're clear, we're crystal clear on how we're doing this height. Uh, as Kara knows, my concern is, a story is a C variance, a D V H C, but a height, if it's more than ten percent, is a D, and the board can't hear it. So this is one thing that, we gotta get within ten percent.
Yes.
So, so Mike, and on this one, these guys, engineers row just brought this up. Um, on the bottom iteration of this, it has a, it says building height sixty-nine point one seven feet. That's exclusive, it looks like it's exclusive of the parapet.
Which page you on there?
That's the old, that was the original.
The old one.
Oh, that's, that's the original.
That's the original, and then the member that came with the new proposed was on top.
Yeah.
This is, this right here, that's, no, that's, these are the, this is the new one.
Yeah, this is just the west elevation.
Page we're looking at?
Because it's, there's three levels.
No, we don't have that sheet, it's not in your package, for some reason, it's only in the package, it's curled.
Yeah.
That I think came from the original meeting, I think the email of the PDF brought up didn't have that page, because that's what, Brian, you don't have that digital, digitally. That is, I think, from the original concept plan that I kept on the desk.
So if it's sixty-nine point one seven, we just, we still don't know whether that's inclusive of the parapet or not.
Well.
Well, they have it as bulkhead. So top of roof deck, and then they have up to the bulkhead, which is. Oh dear God.
If within, within ten percent, I'm good with that, uh, mayor, because it's, it, the board can hear it, if it's sixty-nine and we said sixty-seven, as long as it's not seventy-five.
Yeah.
We're good, because then it'd be a deviation for two feet, maybe.
Does that matter where it's at?
No.
So if the building is, because isn't the back end of the building at a lower grade than the front end of the building?
Well, what's the front and what's the back?
Well, from Main, okay, so Main Street is at a higher grade than the backside, where you pull in the parking deck, is lower.
It's the average grade plane, if you look at that plan, and the average grade plane by definition is the average elevation around the facility. If you look on that one curled up one, you'll see a dashed line that they say the average grade plane, and that's what they're measuring the height from.
I see it, yeah.
Okay, you see the average grade plane?
Ground, ground floor.
Yeah.
So I don't, if you look at the average grade plane, it says it's fifty-eight, and then the parapet's an extra six feet, so you're up to sixty-four, sixty-five. If the board's not com, I'm saying if it's seventy and we say sixty-seven, the board does, it's not a problem.
Right.
It'd be a deviation or a C variance, but it doesn't stop the works, okay, as long as it's within ten percent.
Well, and, and.
We're comfortable with seventy.
Yeah, and, and the reality is, as, as the project goes forward, and, and Mike and I had this conversation, Mike's raising the flag saying, look, the caveat is, as, as plans come in, we may have to make some, you know, the, the planning board may have to recommend some changes to council in order for the, for the project to be compliant.
Right, when they.
Well, yes, at that point, they would have to come in with a site plan, and there would be variances on there that we would have to review.
Right.
We're doing the best we can, based on our concept and understanding of what we're looking for, with no actual physical dimensions given to us as a fin, as an actual even preliminary site plan.
For example, in Schedule B, it, it, there's a requirement in one of the zones, glow floor area of the residential can't be more than eighty or ninety percent. I can't calculate that right now, because I don't have the square footage, and the deck, there's, the parking garage doesn't count. So that's the retail versus the apartments. It's eighty, it's very high, but if we exceed that, it's a problem that has to be amended, but I, I don't have the information.
Yep.
So, before someone gives me stink eye in five months, why didn't you catch this call? I'm just telling.
Which is, has been a concern, and one of the reasons we're gonna peel this off, because we're gonna do this and do these amendments to this area based on full concept thought processes, no actual facts. And if that ends up being in, not, not catching everything now, there's nothing we can do about that.
Right.
And, and us here on the board looking at it, saying this is what we would recommend.
Right.
So thoughts on the sixty-seven?
Would the board be comfortable with seventy, just make it seventy?
What was it, what is it currently again?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five.
I got all my numbers mixed up and jumbled in my head, seventy-five, I'd be, I'll be honest, looking at some of these concepts, I, I'd be, feel more comfortable if we went to seventy. In this area, again, this is specifically, because I'm not comfortable with that in other areas, so that is specifically for this area, it's specific area of the E C.
Not to exceed seventy, inclusive of.
Yes.
Parapet and all fenestrations.
Yes.
Yeah.
What's the speed limit on the highway?
Twenty-five.
No, no, on the highways.
Depends which one.
Depends which highway you're on.
Okay, you're doing sixty-five, but what do you drive, seventy, seventy-five, when do you get a ticket, seventy-eight? So what do you drive, seventy-five? So if we raise this to seventy, they're gonna go to sixty-nine point five, which is five feet more than we've already agreed to.
No, based on, that's what I'm saying, based on these concept drawings, they proposed sixty-nine point seven. And that's what we saw in the, and that's why I'm a la, I think we're okay, because that's what we saw in front of us.
I'm just concerned that if we raise it, they're gonna go to that raise.
There, and that's what we already saw and, and said was acceptable. If it wasn't, I would agree with you, Larry, but when we looked at that concept plan, we were looking at around seventy feet, they reduced it from, um, whatever it was before, seventy-five. Um, and just that even, I know five feet doesn't sound like a lot, but it was enough that you definitely changed the look in, in the, of that.
It's a half the story right off the bat.
Yeah, and again, the addendum's gonna be for lots and blocks, so it's specific for this concept plan, as opposed to anywhere else in the E C B D. We'll try to narrowly define, what, why they're being.
I'm, I'm fine with the seventy.
Okay.
Yeah, and just so everybody's clear, it was like fifty-eight point five, where they were saying building height, right? So it is glad, I'm glad we're going, because then including the overall bulkhead, which they didn't include in the building height, now you're at just under seventy. So I think that's where we have to say very clearly, that overall, it's not building height as they're classifying it. Our new building height means even your decorative finish of anything.
Yes, so we can clarify that.
You can pass that, I think.
Next, uh, comment was, there is a setback from Veterans Memorial Drive that this project doesn't meet. Uh, the setback is, uh, is ten feet. The setback on the concept plans is four feet and, four feet and change, so I had proposed.
Oh, oh, not overall, in section, area.
In sections, correct, not overall, but the setback from Veterans Memorial along the curve essentially. There is, it's closer, it, so I had said a minimum two feet setback, but, but with the caveat, because I don't have the sight lands, it doesn't exceed the sight lands. When you go through a curve, you have to be able to see on the inside on a curve. Veterans Memorial is curved there where it hits East Main Street, so I just said, two feet and, and not impede sightline of motorists traveling of vets either direction, because we don't have that information.
No, but I think that's enough of a catchall, for now, that all we can give.
Yes.
Is that enough room for the sidewalk coming around?
The sidewalk's in the right of way.
Yeah.
Doesn't impact the sidewalk, it's the actual structure, it's not gonna meet ten foot setback, if you look in the curve, you'll see where that structure is. I wanna make sure that the sight lands work, so you're not having a traffic hazard, you can't see enough.
Which was something that was brought up during the concept review, so I, it's appropriate to make sure that it's clarified in the redevelopment plan. Yeah.
Right.
It was brought up by numerous members, I remember, so let's make sure that that is in there.
So is there intent to put like a traffic light here at any point, is that something we need to be monitoring?
It's a state highway, so we really have no, we, we can make, and, a request, but it is not our roadway.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, is the setback, you know, if that's something that we would ever wanna do, you know, maybe it's not something in the next five, ten years, but twenty years from now, if we, and we build all this stuff, and we do all more vehicles, is that something we need to ensure we have the proper space for, or not?
Did you already have that light on Gaston Avenue, so we come down another block, and have another one?
Yeah, I don't, I don't ever foresee New Jersey Department of Transportation approving that with the proximity to her point of the Gaston Avenue one. Um, I know nothing's ever impossible, but unfortunately, we all know how DOT is, and that's most likely a, um, as close to impossible as we possibly get.
It, it's a, it's a good comment, and I like the idea of thinking forward. One of the discussions we had with them was, how do you increase pedestrian safety in that area? Because of the accessibility to the tennis courts, the pickleball courts, the ball field, and the greenway trail. Um, and I think that's something at site plan that we can, we can begin to address with them a little bit more, whether it's markings, lightings, crosswalk, uh, signals, uh, because you have this great intersection of kids and, and pedestrians in that area between the two parklands, so it's, it's good thinking.
I mean, you have a lot of, I mean, that's actually quite a wide area of road, at least on the, the Main Street.
Yeah.
There's an opportunity to get this right.
Yeah, yeah, it's good.
As a board like, I could beef that up, because the sight land should be, we talked about the intersection brought up, East Main, the sight line. I had mentioned on that, but we could have a catchall that the sight lands throughout the project have to comply, so that, to address any obstructions anywhere on the project, that has to comply. So we could add a sentence saying, the sight lands, and list veterans, the intersection of East Main and veterans, wrapping around, even an intersection of Hamilton, just say it all, that the project cannot impede sight lands, so it's safe for motorists and pedestrians.
Yes.
Which it should be.
It should be anyway, but I know, again, this was specifically brought up during this concept review.
Right. And the, 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 the ideas, the areas I didn't touch, I just said in the end, is the bedroom sizes, which I don't know, because we don't have that specific, the G F A, which we discussed. Uh, and then, whether or not, the, the plan, this talk about meeting, the, the borough has an obligation, all the redevelopment plans say, if the borough has an affordable housing obligation, the applicant has it. Since we're here, I don't know if you wanna further, the board would like to further clarify that, saying, uh, this applicant on these lots has to abide by the fair share plan, the boroughs, just say, the big clear, it doesn't state that.
Is, is it in the existing, no, it's not in the existing redevelopment plan, is it? No, it's, it's a broad overview.
It's a broad statement.
Yeah, then yes, I think the answer to that is yes, that, that, uh, this.
Right.
Will comply.
And that.
Must comply.
In my opinion, is consistent with everything else that we're looking at. Our master plan, our affordable, our housing plan, we need these plans to be consistent with overall.
So, I'll add it, in, in the addendum, that this, any development on these lots has to comply with the borough's housing element and fair share plan.
Yes.
Period.
Yep.
Yeah, not, nothing specific you brought.
Just have to comply, right now, we, we'll look at this with the different plans, but basically, the language goes back twenty, fifteen years ago, it says, uh, if the borough gets an obligation, the, the developer has to address it, but doesn't, it's twenty years ago, guys, so.
We just did something about this an hour ago.
That's, that's the ordinance that allows for the, uh, the, the twenty percent rule.
It applies to, it applies to everybody.
Yes.
All the time, no matter who it is.
But there's nothing wrong with putting it in twice.
No, no, that's what I'm saying, but that's the.
Yes, exactly, yeah.
Because it'll also show you're not exempt, right?
Yes.
Because a lot of times, that's what happens, they're like, oh, we thought redevelopment was exempt from that, even though we have it applicable to the entire borough, this will be very clear that they're not exempt.
So I will add that in the addendum, uh, that, that, that language on the, the fair share plan, the obligation. Yep, okay.
Okay, any other recommendations that you had specifically in this one area?
No.
Any other thoughts for this area from the board, concerns?
Yeah, one of, from the color renderings, it was either eleven or thirteen. It shows just the full area, you know, from, from stop. You're talking about the sight line issue with that.
The sight line issues you're talking about, about the building spaces that are two or three feet from the property line. For them to fix that, they'd have to truncate that, those apartments?
No, what I'm, what I'm basically saying, Larry, is the building is within a few feet of the right of way, and you can see that, and you're right, page eight eleven, you'll see how close the building is, on that small location on seat eight eleven, it shows you, I'm on eight eleven, or it's on.
I'm looking at the overview on page eleven of thirteen, that just shows it.
This one, Mike.
Okay, yeah, that'll do it.
It shows the corners that go very close to the sidewalk, that's what we're talking about. In order for them to fix those, they have to potentially move the building back, make the apartments smaller?
Yeah, Larry, the point being, the, the question is, is it appropriate to have the building within, let's say, two or three feet of the right of way? And if the council and the planning board likes the plan, then it becomes a sightline, public safety issue. Can you see, can people walk, is there any kind of, we're gonna have a dark area where people are walking, and you have a, a, an area that we don't have illumination because the building's on top of the road, those type of things. So that's what I'm trying to get at the addendum, saying that if the board's comfortable with this, you can do it as long as you're meeting the public safety issues. Sightland, lighting, the sidewalk. That's where I'm coming from, it, it screams, it's very close, right? Typically, you don't have developments within two feet of the right of way, but in this application, given the Veterans Memorial, if it's appropriate, it's appropriate, you just gotta make sure it's safe.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? So procedurally, since we're peeling this off, uh, next steps, Kara?
So, next step at this point, um, would be to, and, and just so I'm understanding the, the peeling off concept, we're basically just going to take this one section and create a separate portion of the plan?
I don't think we have a choice, yes, because we want, I, I'm not comfortable, and I don't know how the other, other board members feel, but I know I'm not comfortable, that we have truly look at, looked at the entire E C B D, we've been very focused on this area, and I don't wanna miss this opportunity, so that thought process was, can we section this off? And that's what I'm saying, procedurally, how do we do that, where this piece can move forward, where we can still look at the rest of the E C B D?
Okay, well, we'd have to take it out of the ECBD. I mean, we could talk to redevelopment council, of course, and make sure from a procedural standpoint, it would have to come out of that area and essentially either-
I, I don't know that it can, so-
So, maybe it's, it's-
So, so here-
Some of the phased process.
Well, that's, and that's kind of what it is. Because, because this project is already in motion. There is not another project that's in motion in that district. So, we want to be able to take a look at the rest of the district, but we have to make some changes within, within the redevelopment plan for this, to allow this to continue that forward momentum. Colin, you got anything out of Chris Zingaro?
Can I finish one really, really quick?
I do, actually.
I thought that we could do an amendment, so this is really just one piece of an amendment, but it doesn't close out the reexam. We can't, that's what I'm asking.
That's what we did at 40 Haynes. It was in 50 Kirby redevelopment plan. We did an addendum to allow the density to be higher, because they were higher. So, we didn't redo the whole plan. It was a site-specific requirements for that one lot, in that case, 50, 40 Haynes.
And what I've also seen is creating districts within the plan. So, kind of subsections, sub-district areas that can have different requirements than other portions of the plan. Because again, when you've looked at the area and determined it was an area in need of redevelopment, you looked at it as a whole. And that determination was made as a whole, taking each one of those lots and parcels into effect. You created the plan around that designation and that finding. And now, like you said, there's a certain portion of it that's proceeding in a certain fashion. And you want to look at those particular areas in order to allow that certain portion of the project to, to continue.
Yeah, and, and to that point, really quick, I just want to clarify, it, it's, I kind of like the idea that, you know, district or something, because that's kind of my point. You look at what we're doing down there, my, my opinion, and again, this is my opinion as a planning board member. I'm not comfortable with that all the way up East Main Street. And I think that's what we've been tasked to look at. So, however we can do that is what I think, and I don't want to speak for the whole board. I'm speaking for myself right now. That is, and then the board, I'm asking for you all to chime in, to say, how can we do that in this area? But then we're going to continue to look at the rest to say, it might not be what's down here.
Well, and I think a, a sub-district or something along those lines, or it could just be as simple as, on these blocks and lots, these are the density, these are the heights, these are the requirements. And then that amendment is changed, and then you continue to look at the remaining-
So, that amendment with those details could move forward, and then we can still look.
So, so Colin's had discussion with redevelopment council on this. Colin, you want to talk to that?
Thanks, ma'am. We've got an example that we've already done some years ago. But I spoke to Zingaro, and he said, we can amend the plan by block and lot. And that's what-
That's what she just said, yes.
It's just, it's as simple as that. It's a simple amendment to the plan for those blocks and lots. And that's exactly what we did when we added the north side of Main Street. It's an amendment to the West Main Street redevelopment plan. So, we've already established a precedent essentially, that we can amend plans without getting into districts or anything else. You just state the, the bulk standards for those particular blocks and lots.
That's probably the easiest way to do it.
Okay.
That's how Mike has it listed right now in this recommendation. So, if that's what we're doing, then what's the best?
Yeah, I just want our, on record, our board attorney giving us that recommendation.
Yeah.
That's what I'm looking for.
What I did is I gave you the commentary, you saw what the language is. Green is commentary, and red's proposed change. If the board's comfortable that, I would just do an addendum, work with Kara, and just give it, you don't need the commentary. Just say what the bulk standards are for these lots and blocks. And I think it'd be helpful if we attach to facilitate this. The whole intent of this is to do this.
Yes.
Somehow, we can get a small diagram, something in this, and so, this is what this is trying to facilitate for the addendum.
Yeah, because the board has seen a concept of a proposal, and as a result of that, this amendment-
Right.
Is being assisted to help facilitate that.
So, the next step would be, in my opinion, the list, this list on this Colin said, forget the commentary.
Yep.
List the bulk standards that we know of, obviously, GFA stuff we know. Put the affordable housing, show a picture of it, and-
You and I have done that dialogue anyhow. When we first wrote it, included affordable housing, a lot of other stuff.
So-
If I may just continue a little bit, and, and really, you make a recommendation to the council to amend the plan by ordinance.
Amended, amended by ordinance to make these changes with regard to these particular blocks and lots.
Yeah.
As the board continues to look further at other blocks and lots within the area.
Yes.
In reality, the addendum, as for what we're speaking, it's going to be a couple of pages, two, three, four pages. It's not 40 pages. It's going to list it, intro, what we're trying to do, list all these-
You're not changing the uses, you're not changing the findings, you're not changing anything. You're not removing lots and blocks, you're not adding lots and blocks, you're just amending-
No, because under the current direction, we're not allowed, we can't add anything right now.
Okay.
So, I guess also procedurally, a requi, is this amendment required for a public hearing?
Is this amendment, well, right now, it would just be a recommendation back to council.
Okay.
And then they would have to amend the plan, which would then have to come here for review.
Okay.
And then it would be consistent, yeah, you wouldn't really actually even need a, it would be like any other ordinance.
Okay, I just want, I'm just trying to figure out timelines here.
Yep.
But we do have a, a public hearing for an ordinance.
It would have to come to a public hearing for consideration by the board, yes. For consistency with your master plan, because it would be like any, it's a, it's a change to the redevelopment plan, which is essentially an ordinance, which comes here the same way any other ordinance.
Yes. And, but I guess, I still don't have an answer to my question.
Sorry.
Are we required to do public, or is that taken care of at the council level for the public?
It's taken care of at council level.
Okay.
We have to consider and do the consistency finding the same way we did four times tonight at a public hearing. But the public hearing is not to hear the public, that is what happens at the council level.
Okay, that's what I just wanted, because we're, right, our timelines that Colin and I worked on, there's a lot of details that got missed.
Yep.
So, I'm just trying to clarify our timelines of what's required on this moving forward before, so there's no surprises. These are the next steps that have to happen.
I mean, it's really, it's technically the same thing, because I know how you usually operate. Usually like to have, you know, whatever commentary there may be.
Yes.
Sorry.
But I'm more worried about that public noticing time and all that others. That's more what I get concerned with.
Everything we had, when we were doing the public hearing on the actual designation of the area and the findings, that's a totally different story.
Right.
That's when we needed double publication, we needed notice of, completely different, not what we're talking about here.
Okay.
So, I can work with Kara and give you a, a two, three-page addendum with the map. Planning board likes what they see, then it'll be kicked up to council for rec, for consideration.
There's a timing consideration here. And you've got two meetings to get an ordinance in. You've got two meetings in December. So, if everything, if, if everything was perfect, the ordinance would be ready to be introduced on December 1st. There's no more planning board meetings before then.
Nope.
So, it either gets booted to next year, which means you hear it in February, or we try and work out a way of getting it done this year.
Well, we don't have to boot anything, we still have, it still has to come back here for a final. So, we're not, at this point, ready to move it to council anyway. We can now, at our next meeting, our final meeting, we can do that final review, and then we can make the recommendation at that meeting.
Which would be your second meeting in November.
No, we do not, we only, we're down to one meeting in November, one meeting in December.
Yeah.
Right, so, but so then everything would have to happen, to Colin's point, next year, because council can't introduce an ordinance in one year and then adopt it in the second year, the following year.
They can do it.
But they're not introduced, they wouldn't-
Introduce it on the 1st, comes back to you for the 10th, which is your last meeting. Then if everything's, as you said, it goes back for the 15th for adoption.
Okay, that means everybody here has to be comfortable, we're not going to see a final draft, it's going right to council.
No, you will see a final draft between introduction and adoption.
Yep.
It'll be at our me, this meeting, the planning board meeting in December.
Well, I guess what could happen is if the change, I mean, we, since we don't have another meeting in November, because this is our only meeting, between now and a date certain, Mike could get the final draft done, and everybody have enough time to look at it prior to the December 10th meeting. I mean, that's the only other option.
That's what I'm saying, in order for it to go back to council, because this has to go back to council. That means the recommendation has to happen tonight, not looking at any new draft or anything.
All right, so, so is, is there an impetus to do it before January 1? You know, I, we're, we're killing ourselves here with this conversation.
That's what I'm, that's what I was trying to say, and I'd like to, I'd like to clarify.
So, let's, let's just go on our path, we already know the path. Mike, you get it to the planning board. Once the planning board makes the recommendation, then the council will take it up in due course. Done.
As the chair, we will see, hear it at the December 10th. That will be the next time we see this. It is not going to council from this point on. We will hear it back again for final draft of this portion on December 10th.
It'll be clear, I'll work with Kara.
And everyone's comfortable, there's no other, with what's been talked about with regard to height, the-
No, but I think that's why we all need to see this final draft of what will be peeled off and made rec, final recommendation back to council.
What you'll see is the addendum.
Addended, addendum.
Addendum, however we're going to call this, with the exact standards, with the concept plan, so you have everything in one document, with the language about the 70, including the parapets all around it, with the housing element and fair share language in that addendum, and the sight lines, all the language for the board to review.
Yes, thank you. All right, now, but not done with ECBD. So, everybody was given a flash drive by Mike. Has everybody been able to go through the overall ECBD and really take a look at the details of that? No, we're not discussing the rest of that tonight. I just want to make sure that every, I just want to make sure that everybody still has that and knows that, when you see items here under discussion, that means every meeting, we will be discussing it, and it moves it forward to the next meeting. And sometimes, we can push it off, I mean, or I shouldn't say, we can move it to the next step of going to council. But anything under discussion is that full-out discussion. And until we're in that good spot, we're, we're in the proper spot where we can now move it back to council, it stays on our agenda. So, I just wanted to make sure everybody's understanding that, and that is what's still going to happen with the remaining portions of the ECBD.
I, I, well, I, I think we need to be a little more clear for the public on that. Because when we list it here, if, if it's being listed and we're not having discussion, we don't want the public coming out and, and, and not having substantive, or, and having substantive discussion, and vice versa. If we, if we don't have it, I, I think we need on the agenda to at least tell them, and we've done this in the past, no discussion is slated for this, other than updates.
That's what I'm saying, sir, mayor. The, everything under discussion is that.
But we, I, we need to articulate that, because if we have everything listed, we, we could have, we could have anybody who's interested in this, and all we're doing is giving an update, and I don't, I don't know that that's fair to the public to do. I think we have to be clear on whether we're going to be having significant discussion, significant dialogue on an item, or if it's just going to be update from the planner or update from the chair on the status of, of what it is. Because I don't, it's, I don't want people to have to come out when they don't have to come out, when they could sit home and just get a quick update.
Right.
You know, it, to me, I, I think we just need to be a little bit more fair to them, to the public.
We can get more detailed in the dis, in the actual description.
That's it, yeah.
I think is where, to your point, it might say just an update by the planner.
Yes.
Other than that, it will continue on as to, Ryan and I can work on language that is dis, that is detailing the fact that it is actual discussion with an open. And one of the things I was going to make, I want Ryan to add, is right after, before open business is, because open business is separate, that is just listing something that we might discuss to say, hey, this is where we're still at. We're still, because I have a couple of questions on the master plan, but we are not discussing the master plan. We're talking procedural issues. I want added that the open, these discussion items that are on the agenda, because technically, anything like that, it is open to the public for them to make a comment. So, I want that separated out, because the only thing we have on this agenda open to the public is for items not on the agenda. And then I think, to your point, mayor, more detail in there on, so that they know prior.
Yeah.
What, what is truly going to be in discussion.
And, and what's just going to be a, an overview update of status?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We, we could say on the agenda, actions to be taken, things for discussion.
Well, you know what, we'll let the chair work that out with, with Ryan.
I think we, I want to be careful, because I also don't want to also be misleading to the public. Some discussions lead to some decisions, and I, I want the board to have the flexibility for that. We're trying to be more transparent to them, to the public. But I also don't want to back ourselves into a corner, and we said, well, it was only an update, now we can't talk about it.
That's going to happen, though. It, it has to happen.
But no, no, I'm saying, I don't mind general conversation after an update, but nothing that-
Substantive.
Right, that's what I'm getting at.
And, and maybe it's as simple as saying, discussion items are items that will be subject to an open for public comment, whereas open business is items that are slated for update to the board. And even with an asterisk somewhere that says, you know, at any time, however, the board has the ability, because you do by law to make amendments to your agendas.
Yes.
You know, so, and the agenda is only required to be listed to the extent known at the time of the meeting, or, or when the agenda is made public. So, maybe if there's a distinction between discussion items and what those are, open business, which is what that is, you know, whether that's not for discussion or whatever the case may be, and we can work through that, but, you know, then maybe that segregates the two.
Yeah, and, and the other thing is, I also don't want to be misleading to the board members. We have a lot going on right now. We can't keep pushing and kicking the can on some of these items, because we're not ready to discuss it. So, that's one of the reasons they need to stay front and center, right? So, that's, it's, that's that give and take right now. Because you look at, we still have the rest of the ECBD to look at, we have a stormwater ordinance we still have to look at, we have a tree ordinance, those three major items are still front and center for us. They cannot skip meetings, those discussions have to keep going. So, I, I hear everybody, and I think Ryan and I can work on some of that language, so that it's a little clearer to the public on, you know, like, right now, tonight, I knew there was, in my opinion, nothing that was under discussion was meant for an update. It was full-out discussion to make sure, because we had to send stuff either back to council or have discussions to see where we stood with those. Those aren't updates, right.
Yep.
But, and I agree, but, and, and it says that, so, like for zoning, board to discuss status and review recommendations from board planner, or refer back to council. But stormwater ordinance and tree ordinance, we don't, we're not telling the public what we're talking about.
And I think, to your point, that has to be more detailed, yes. Yes, on specifically the tree and the stormwater.
All right, did we beat that to death?
I think we did.
Yeah.
No, we could do a little bit more.
And then now, onto that stormwater ordinance. So, Mike, can you give us a recap? Because I know that some members said we're not here at the last meeting.
Sure.
Just a recap of where we are, because I want to make sure that we are all still discussing this. Because again, I cannot stress enough, we, these timelines of the stuff that has to get pushed through, we can't keep saying, oh, I didn't get to it, I didn't get to it. We need to discuss these items, and we need to make sure that we're reviewing them in between meetings.
Yes, the DEP is requiring the borough to update its stormwater ordinance. So, you have a red line copy that was discussed in the last meeting was, the, I would say, the argument, not the argument, the ordinance right now is 95% consistent with the DEP model ordinance. So, if the, the, the planning board and the council would so choose to make it totally consistent, it'd be very minor changes, and to come up with a definition of major development, or keep it the way it was, was changed in 2023. The Environmental Commission gave a presentation showing a significant, in my opinion, a significant change in the ordinance, which is permitted under the model. You can go stricter to come up with a different scenario, minor development, and to tweak and modify the definitions of a major, including infiltration and permit fees. So, it, it really depends if the planning board is leaning towards, or that, we, the planning board hasn't had that discussion yet. But depending on which direction or, or something in between, it could be a significant item for discussion.
So, I guess I wanted that recap, so that everybody here who, who has been in attendance, who has not been in attendance, understands that really for the next, the 10th, that is an item that should be, I want everybody to review what those red lines were, what the recommendations are on that stormwater, and they should be coming back with comments and questions, so that we can continue to move this forward. Because I don't think there was that understanding after the last meeting of what that task is. So the task is, you need to read this stuff, you need to look at it, and it will be on the agenda for the tenth, our last meeting of the year, to really have some in-depth conversation, and comments, questions, concerns, anything. But we have got to make sure that we're looking at that detail.
Yeah, that summary table really calls out the differences between the two. And we have, the board has not had the discussion on the nuts and bolts. We talked about overview and what the model says, and the Environmental Commission gave its presentation, and you have the red line, but this body has not discussed what ultimately the recommendation the council is going to...
Correct, that's what we need, yes.
And that's, that could be literally, if you get lucky, it's one meeting. There's a lot of unpacked in there.
Yes.
Uh, it could be two, three meetings, in reality, depending on how the board wants to do with the current ordinance. It could be a minor change, or it could be a substantial change.
Yes, um, if everyone is, and I'm, I'm asking for opinion on this. I, I know I can make the decision as the chair, but I would like everybody's opinion. Um, tree ordinance, I would like to hold off full discussion on that until after the first of the year, so that we can continue to focus on the ECBD, on the other rest of the area, and looking at the stormwater.
I agree.
Is everybody comfortable with that?
Take them one at a time.
Okay, I just want to make sure everybody's okay with that, because I think it is way too much to ask all of us or any of us to do that. So Ryan and I will look, work on language for how we're gonna list tree ordinance. It's probably gonna go right to open business, okay? And it would just be maybe an update if needed, but we're not, it's not gonna be up for full discussion. Doesn't mean we don't have, we're not looking at it, you know, behind the scenes, but we're not gonna do that discussion till after the first of the year.
And if the board have any questions on stormwater between now and the next meeting, please reach out. I could chop this up into different segments to look at, or maybe it's just overcoat. You will look at a broad brunch, then narrow it out. Take the thirty thousand foot view, and then continue ten thousand, five thousand to go that direction. Overview to specifics.
Okay.
If that's, I think that's the most appropriate way of handling it. What you're trying to accomplish, number one, the overview, and then once you settle on a policy decisions, for recommendations, and then from that policy, you drill down to the actual language. If that makes any sense to...
Does.
As opposed to going to every little detail, we could spend the whole meeting on what's the definition of major development, and then go through all the nuts and bolts, but I think it's better to start with a policy of what we're trying to accomplish.
Yes.
And then once that policy, there's consensus with the board, and then based on that policy, you craft the ordinance to reflect that policy.
Correct, yep. Which, and to your point, which is why it's not gonna be one meeting.
That's what I'm getting at. I, if we start with policy, that could be a, one meeting itself, just knocking out policy, because the policy, do you want annual stormwater permits to applicants, yes or no?
Let's not, let's not even get it now, let's...
Because we may all be in agreement if that's needed.
Right, it could be, it could be quick, it could be...
I, I just, just want to focus on the fact...
Don't get into any issues.
I want to just focus on the fact of what the task and the charges for the planning board members for the December tenth meeting.
Have a question or suggestion. People at the Environmental Commission are making themselves available. If anybody has questions about their presentation or any of their short sheets, our people can reach out to them.
So I think if a board member has a concern or a question, you reach out to Ryan, go through Ryan, and then Ryan and I'll talk to see if it's, if it's something that maybe we can just get an answer, or do they need to come back, all right? But yes, opening that up, because you may need clarification on, on something that they, or maybe looking for some clarification.
If they're more than willing to answer questions, very happy.
Well, and I would think the clarification should come in a public session. It shouldn't be behind the scenes.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Board to board.
Then Ryan would, Ryan would schedule that with the Environmental Commission, yes. Um, all right. Open business, master plan, update and review. Procedurally, have we received everything back? That's what I thought. So I'd like to get on record who has not, who has not sent back.
I wouldn't do that to them, chair. I would suggest that Ryan let me know, um, offline, and then I will approach the chairs.
Okay.
And impress upon them that the...
Can we just get a percentage, then? I'd like, we need to know where we stand, because this is something that has got to continue to charge forward as well. Okay. Okay.
Don't get into names, yeah, yeah, no names.
No, all right, so about fifty percent, all right, so we do have, so what I guess my point is that also, I'm trying to get an idea in my head, how fast we'd be able to start discussing. It's not gonna happen anytime soon for that, right? Okay, then that's really more of what I wanted. We can deal with it behind the scenes on how we get that moved forward, but, all right. So we're not, everything's there, being able to move forward, all right. Any other questions as it relates to the master plan? I don't think so, we're just kind of waiting now, okay. Uh, architectural review board, we did have one eighty-one. Again, this is for transparency for you guys and the public. We had, uh, one eighty-one, West Main Street was a sign. I don't remember what the, what was this? Thank you. The yoga sex. Um, it was a very appropriate sign, it was, it was no issues. Everybody has that in their pocket. I think everybody is about done with all my comments tonight, so I'm gonna say I have no more comments. Um, I am going to open up the meeting to the public. All members of the public who wish to address the board on any matter, not listed on the agenda tonight, Mike does it, so, yeah, okay, there we go. Closing, now I'm gonna open, now it's closed, there we go. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?